Hi, is that Madam Chair Weiss on the line? Hi. Hello, everyone. I call the Select Board to order tonight, Thursday, December 28th, at 7:06 PM. Motion to open the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll. Mr. Gito.
I'm here.
Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavey.
Here.
Mr. Carrera.
Here.
And I'm here as well. I ask all to stand if you are able to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the governor's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. This meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and maybe livestream at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if the live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. First, Mr. Coulter, would you do us the honor of introducing us to our new Finance Director, please?
Madam Chair, thank you, and it is indeed an honor to introduce the public to Elizabeth Zaleski, better known as Biz, that's her nickname, to be the Town of Stoughton's new Finance Director and Town Accountant. Each of you have had the opportunity to meet with Elizabeth, in fact, put her through a very challenging interview, and you unanimously chose Elizabeth, whereas this is your appointment. I will tell you, leading up to your interview of Elizabeth, we had interviewed dozens of people after a very extensive, not quite worldwide, but not quite nationwide, but pretty extensive search. What we loved about Elizabeth, among many things, is her experience with all three departments which she will manage: the accounting department, the assessing department, and the treasurer-collectors office. The second most appealing feature of Liz, Elizabeth, in addition to her general character, and she is a character, is she's a teacher. She has been an instructor for many of the Town Accountants and Finance Directors across the South Shore, and is well-known for her teaching abilities, whether it be in accounting, assessing, treasury, or in Mass Municipal Law and DESI Regulations. So we're getting the whole package in this candidate, and with that, I would invite Liz to, if you don't mind, Elizabeth, come up front. The Board knows you well. The Board proudly voted unanimously to support you, but perhaps tell the public a little bit about you, and then I'll turn it back to the Chair, because I know the members would like to welcome you. Push that green button if you haven't already.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter, members of the Board, for having me tonight. My name is Elizabeth Zaleski. I am a certified governmental accountant, and I've been certified since 2010, and I have been in the municipal field since 2005, staying out as an accounts payable clerk for the Town of Abington. Since then, I've grown pretty quickly into the role of Town Accountant and Finance Director. I pride myself on the fact that I teach. I'm a member of the Executive Board of the Massachusetts Municipal Auditors and Accountants Association. I am the second Vice President. I am proud of what we do from an association, that we provide the information and guidance to Select Boards, Town Councils, and residents in general when we get to legislative body meetings. And that is pretty much me in a nutshell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter. Thank you so much for attending tonight's meeting. We look forward to working with you. And now I'll turn it over to my fellow Board members, in case they want to make a comment. Vice Chair Cavey, and then Mr. Gito, McCrisky.
Thank you very much. I am very excited to work with you, Ms. Zaleski, very excited to work with you, and I'm excited about the fact that you have education experience, experience educating people on these things. The key to a lot of our challenges as a town ultimately cross paths in one way or another with how it is that we finance the things that we're trying to accomplish. It is the cornerstone of what we do. It is, I think, to a large degree, defines whether or not we're going to be successful or not, is if we can understand the problems we have financially, find meaningful solutions for it. And also, more importantly, we have to be able to be persuasive to people that these are the right choices to follow. And so those all seem to be skills that you have, and for that, I'm grateful that you chose Stoughton, and I'm excited to work with you. Just before I pass the mic, though, and I'm very excited to do, hopefully, many years ahead, we'll work together, I also just want to thank Mary Jane Martin. She took on the role as interim Town Accountant, has done an absolutely phenomenal job, and has brought us through a unique set of difficult times, and has done it with great skill, with just a willingness to work with everybody, help any way she possibly can. And I'm grateful that she's taking on other roles in the town within our audit department. But I do want to say that the time that we've had you as an interim has been wonderful. I'm grateful for your sacrifice in doing this, and just can't thank you enough for doing all that you've done.
Mr. Gito, would you like to say a few words?
I'm really happy that you're here.
Thank you.
I think one of the most important things, from my perspective, is that you are dealing with a number of different communities in one of your roles as an important member of your organization. You have an opportunity, and I'm sure you've taken advantage of it in the past and in the present, to find out what the best ways of doing things are in bringing that to the town. We need to do that. And we had several years ago, when the Polito and Baker administration, or vice versa, were in charge, they had the community compacts, which looked very carefully at and gave money to support innovations in various municipal areas. And I think that that is absolutely critical for any organization to do that, and my expectations are that you will do a great job. So thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
And I want to also thank MJ for everything that she's done. She's wonderful. I can't say anything more.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky.
I think my words are going to be a little more for Mary Jane. Everybody knows the phantom, right? The cloak. Mary Jane walked around here, very pleasant with everybody, and hello, how are you? Nice to see you. We knew you were doing a great job, and then all of a sudden, bang, the bomb went off, you know, after Bill had retired, and, boy, did you come alive. My gosh, you know, and I want to thank you personally for that. We have a great staff, one of the greatest staffs I've worked with since, you know, my long tenure here, and you really, really rose to the top. Thank you so much for everything you've done. The people of this town are lucky to have you here. And with our new financial manager, accountant, list of many things, but you have knowledge in every one of them, welcome to the town.
Thank you.
Can't wait to have you working together with Mary Jane as a team, and I think we're going to do things that we've never dreamed possible, which seems to be, you know, a lot going on in that area, you know, in recent year. So welcome to the team.
Thank you.
And you probably won't see much of me, because I listen to people smarter than me when it comes to finance, so. I don't like finance and never did. I'm an ops person, and I say on it all the time, you give me my million dollars to run my department, I'll turn money back at the end of the year, and I'll over-deliver. But, you know, it's up to you. That's a lie? I heard that. Yeah, I heard that. I heard that.
I'm just being honest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a lot, okay. See, I only hear the deceitful words in my ears. That's what I'm used to. But all kidding aside, no, thank you, and I think your nickname says a lot about you. When somebody goes, I can't go by a nickname, because you can't say them in public. But, you know, it's great to have you on board, and we're really looking forward to your teachings, and if I say something dumb, which I do once in a while, you know, you can feel free to call me out on it, because I don't like to not know that, you know. So I want to learn from you as well, so, welcome.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrera.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Elizabeth, thank you. I've made one good appointment in your office, and I think I made a second one, so I won't have to worry too much about anything, and I think you'll do well.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and paper, big thing. I'm right there with you. And to Mary Jane, Mary Jane, I want to just tell you, I have a lot of respect for people who step up, not step back, and that says it all. Thank you very much.
So Elizabeth, will you be here all evening, or just for a short time? You're welcome to stay. I'm just asking for expectations.
I understand there's going to be a budget presentation tonight. I plan on staying for that budget presentation. I do have a printout of it at this time, so I can see how you operate your budgets.
Oh, great. So did you want to, you might need a table, you know, because you're just sitting in a chair with the information on your lap, it may be cumbersome. So if you would like to sit...
I can sit back there with it in my lap, or Mary Jane and I can share a table.
All righty.
Does that work?
Sounds great.
All right. Thank you.
Just loving it. Thank you, MJ, too. You know I always appreciate all that you do. Thank you. Moving right along to the next agenda item is proclamation of De Nino's Pizza, and we're going to table that until after the New Year, when everyone's schedule will accommodate the proclamation and the owners of the business and their presence, right? Moving to item number four, that's continuation of the public hearing. And with that, turn it to you, Vice Chair Cavey. And we do have a new list.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment before we begin?
Yes, absolutely.
So the Chair, I've notified members, but for the public's knowledge, we have recently made a staff move, and we're going to be doing licenses from this evening forward out of Mark Tisdale's Development Office, and that's why Mark is with us tonight, for that and a budget. And so Kelly will be moving over to Mark's office in mid-January. I'm absolutely certain that the process, which we appreciate how it was done, the Clerk's Office will take some load off of the Clerk's Office as they move into a very important election year, which will be very, very complex, very cumbersome, and we can do these licenses in the Development Office, where they use a lot of spreadsheets, they use a lot of management control systems, and with Mark's leadership, I know that this will be a seamless process moving forward. So with that, I thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I do have a question about the process, though. I always, and everyone else knows too, that handoffs are the weakest link. So in the past, there was handoffs to others within the organization. Will there be a handoff, I was just asked specifically, to Jilda, to Reggie, or will it all be centralized under Mark Tisdale's area?
The handoff will be documents that will be reviewed and authorized primarily by people reporting to Mark already. So the review and the approval will happen the exact same way. The difference is that Kelly will be among the people who are doing those reviews. Once those files are complete, they will come to Jilda in a completed form. We're not even going to ask Jilda to review them. She will just submit them to the five-member board.
Thank you.
Is that your mark?
Back to you, Vice Chair Cavey.
Thank you very much. So we'll follow a process similar to what we followed last time, which is I'm going to just read through all the licenses that we're going to be deliberating on and voting on. After I read through all the licenses, including one that has some additional stipulations, we will then have the Select Board ask any questions, make any comments they want, then we'll open it up to the public. We can then close the public hearing on these particular licenses and then vote. So the licenses that we are going to be considering, I'll start with all alcohol and entertainment license for Boston Studio Rental, 63 Wyman Street. We will be considering common vehicular licenses for the following: Alex Good Taste Restaurant at 445 Central Street, All-Town Market, Stoughton, 372 Washington Street, Blessed Experience, 756 Washington Street, Corner Cafe, 945 Washington Street, IKEA, One IKEA Way, McDonald's, 422 Washington Street, Miranda Bakery, 358 Washington Street, Panera Bread, 1334 Park Street, Pearl Street Nutrition at 5 Pearl Street, Runner Pizza at 516 Washington Street, Subway at 438 Washington Street, Sunrise House at 343 Washington Street. We'll be considering deliberating on and voting on the following common vehicular and all alcohol licenses: Bean Town Diner, 593 Washington Street, The Olive Garden Italian Restaurant at 401 Technology Center Drive. And we will be deliberating on and voting on the following common vehicular license and amusement license: Target Store, T2258 at One Hawes Way. And finally, we will be deliberating on and voting on the following common vehicular club all alcohol and amusement license at Sons of Italy, 548 Washington Street, with the following stipulations from the Board of Health. Per the Board of Health, the Board of Health would recommend approval of BOS licenses with a stipulation that the BOH receive all of the following, which are needed in order to issue a Board of Health license to operate a food establishment. Number one, anti-choking certificate prior to serving any food or within one month. Number two, satisfactory food safety inspection with one month and prior to preparation or serving of any food, as Board of Health cannot issue a license to operate without pre-operation inspection. Note, the PIC needs to contact BOH to schedule the food safety pre-operation inspection. Number three, renewal of food safety certificate for PIC within two months. And finally, number four, renewal of allergen awareness certificate for PIC within two So does the Board have any questions or comments they'd like to make regarding any of those aforementioned businesses and licenses?
I see none, no questions? Is this the complete list?
Yes, and that's... Is this a complete, the question is, is this a complete list? Okay, yes. So the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager confirmed. So we'll open it up to the, do you have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. So then we'll open up comments to the public. This is Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. The only one that I have a question on is Pine Crest Convenience at 450 Pearl Street.
It's not on the list that I just read, so let me see if it's...
Was it done last week?
Last week, see, wasn't it? Sorry, Ms. Walsh, was that from last week? It's not on the list that we currently have.
It's on the list I have from last week, Attachment B, pending applications. Package store, beer and wine.
That's why it wasn't approved. It's on the list. It was taken care of, the application. I think we voted pending these things coming in, so it was all resolved.
Okay, with regard to these licenses, if there's no other comments or questions, I guess I should ask if there's anybody online who has any questions or comments. Okay, seeing none. With regard to these licenses, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I move that we approve the licenses as they were read, including the Sons of Italy with stipulations written to the record.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. Thank you very much, Vice Chair Cavey. Moving right along to the next agenda item, number five, submission of Town Manager Fiscal Year 25 Operating Budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me begin with a brief statement which summarizes the FY25 Manager's Budget. As required by Article 3 of the Stoughton Town Charter, the Town Manager is expected to deliver the annual town budget to the Select Board by December 31st of each year, therefore allowing the Board time to make desired amendments to the budget and to forward the amended budget to the Town Meeting Committee on Finance and Taxation on or before the third Tuesday of January. Madam Chair, this evening, I am pleased to present to you the FY25 Town Manager's Budget. I would like to thank my budget team for their hard work and critical thinking, as we identified and addressed unprecedented challenges throughout the FY25 budget process. My team consisted of Mark Tisdale, Trish Schropfrier, Mary Jane Martin, and Deanna Chasko. The challenges we faced during the budget process were not typical of past years. The impact of inflation on goods and services, professional staff and on professional staff salaries are measurable and quantifiable. The limited labor market for police and fire personnel has inflated salaries as communities exit civil service. The longstanding salary disparity that exists between male and female professionals doing the same jobs must finally be closed in the Town of Stoughton. Failure to acknowledge and address these challenges and inequities will have costly long-term consequences. As professional staff leave our employment in pursuit of market rate salaries, the cost of replacing our highly trained employees is typically 15% to 20% higher. I am pleased to report that the budget team addressed these and other challenges head-on. We prepared a $32,600,000 municipal budget, which represents a 3.8% increase, a reduction of 0.4 in joint costs. We eliminated several positions and added others, which improves the town's competitiveness, its service quality, makes an investment in community outreach, and which ensures succession in several management areas. In all, the town added six new positions in FY25 and eliminated 11.46 other positions, a net reduction of 5.46 full-time employees. Yesterday, I received the school committee's recommended FY25 budget of $67,882,000, which represents a 15.64% increase over FY24. As stated above, the Select Board must incorporate the school department budget into the municipal budget before submitting it to the Finance Committee by January 16th. The Board is considering its options pursuant to that submission. The Board may present the 15.64% School Committee budget as written. That budget, however, will be significantly out of balance. Alternatively, the Select Board may choose to reduce the School Committee bottom line to 3.8%, the same as the municipal budget, and submit a balanced budget to the Finance Committee. I am very confident that the Select Board and the School Committee will analyze both options and work collaboratively towards a joint solution. Attached to the FY25 operating budget is the FY25 organization chart. As noted, we were unable to fill several positions approved in the FY24 budget. Unfortunately, in spite of widespread advertising, the salaries we offered were not competitive. We met the resulting challenges by asking senior managers to accept additional responsibilities. However, that short-term tactical management approach is simply not sustainable. We have made the targeted salary adjustments in the FY25 budget, which are needed for us to be competitive in the current, excuse me, in the recruitment of high-quality staff. Let me summarize a few features of the FY25 budget. Number one, the municipal operating budget does not rely on the use of one-time free cash. This action, expected to take seven years, is key to strengthening the town's bond rating. Of course, our bond rating drives our cost of borrowing for new schools and infrastructure investments. Therefore, this action was a strategic imperative, and we're delighted to report that this budget does not include the use of one-time free cash in our way to balancing this budget. Number two, the FY25 operating budget does not require or provide subsidies for the water and sewer enterprise funds. Number three, this FY25 operating budget forecasts an additional $500,000 in new revenue needed to fully fund our rubbish removal services. Number four, the FY25 operating budget includes a four-year capital investment plan that you will receive at the next meeting. Number five, the FY25 operating budget has fully funded the health insurance trust fund. No subsidy will be required in FY25. Number six, the FY25 operating budget reflects the savings associated with the police and fire, having joined Regional 911. Number seven, the FY25 operating budget reflects the FY25 salary adjustments associated with labor contracts, with the exception of the Police Superior Officers Union. Number eight, the FY25 operating budget reflects a 12% increase in general liability insurance, approximately $150,000, which has been added to our joint costs. As noted above, even though we're adding $150,000, our 12%... As noted above, even though we're adding $150,000, our 12% in the general liability fund, in fact, our joint costs go down in FY25 versus FY24. That's primarily because of the fact that we are not using any subsidies to balance the enterprise funds and because our health care trust is very stable right now. If you recall, members, you voted a program that included opt-out of this very expensive plan for employees that could get health care at a cheaper price somewhere else. That action, that policy decision you made, has resulted in substantial, over $1 million in annual savings in our health care program. In closing, I'm pleased to report that the financial condition of the Stoughton Municipal Budget is strong and getting stronger. I thank the Select Board members for your guidance, your support, and most importantly, your courage in taking votes on very difficult but very necessary policy decisions. If not for your strategic policy initiatives, the town would not be as well positioned from a financial standpoint as we are going into fiscal '25. With that, Madam Chair, we submit to you the FY25 operating budget for the Board's consideration and amendments as you prepare your budget for the third, to deliver to the Finance Committee on the third Tuesday of January. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. It is our responsibility to the citizens of the town to have a balanced budget and to be fiscally responsible. It's the foundation of what we do, and that is the basis of my, my questions. So my first question is, a number of the Select Board members asked for amendments to your budget before you pass it on to ours. Did you consider them? Did you add to, make the changes or make the edits?
Yes, ma'am. All recommendations made by the Board at the time we closed out this budget process on Tuesday are included in this budget. And as you know, moving forward, I fully expect that the Select Board may make other changes, and we understand that, we encourage that, we embrace that.
Thank you very much. I saw right off the bat, one in the org chart, one of the suggestions that I've made, I said, wait a minute, under our new finance director and town accountant, we missed the line item called accountant. So I see that you added that in, so thank you very much. So I'll actually, do you want to present to us first, or did you want to take questions? And I'll, if yes, I'll start with Mr. Gito.
Because we presented before, there are so few changes, I think it would be wise just to open it up to questions, and Mr. Tisdale and I and Mary Jane would be happy to respond to them.
Thank you very much. I'll start to my left, Mr. Gito, and then just work around.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I submitted to you a, a list of, of thoughts on, on the budget, and I'm not sure, they were, they were submitted on Tuesday?
Yes.
Were they submitted after you made your last changes?
We finished the budget, Mr. Gito, on Monday, knowing full well the budget is going to be reopened for changes proposed by members. So I, as I recall your, your changes, the, the purchasing manager is still funded at the 100% we had proposed the budget, and the reason for doing that, it's our goal through this new purchasing approach, to save $1 million in their first year of purchasing strategically. So we kept that at full-time. The Board, in its wisdom, may choose to change that. I do agree with your point, and had I not closed the budget, I would have accepted it gladly, that the, we may have underfunded the amount of money needed for the communications person. I would agree with your point on that. The, the third budget amendment regards beautification that you had proposed, and I believe in the, in the, in the DPW, because we have two line items that are undesignated for anything, I, I think we'll be able to do all the beautification projects we want. One of them is a $75,000 line item for undesignated projects, things that come up. So I think there's, there's substantial resources in there to really take the first shot at, at not only cleaning up the town to the best of our ability, but to beautify the town. So we're also going to rely upon money in line items within DPW for parks to be able to, to do beautification. So I think those were the three major areas, and, and I, I agree. I hope that, that the Board will amend this budget to include the additional expenses. However, when I received the, the school budget today, as I wrote to you last evening, we got it yesterday, you know, we have very significant challenges ahead of us. So I, I am cautious about increasing the budget in many areas at this point in time until we find out what the final product, I, I know Mr. Cavie and, and the school committee chair are working very closely to address all of our common challenges, and I think the result of that will dictate between now and, as well as House One coming out, will dictate how much money we have to continue to invest in, in matters like beautification and communications and things like that. I just wasn't prepared, with what we know right now, to increase it above 3.8% while still challenging colleagues at the school department to, to come in with a 3.8% budget. So I hope I wasn't too long-winded, and I hope I answered your questions.
You were not too long-winded.
Thank you.
There were a couple of things that I, I think didn't get addressed, and... Are you not hearing me?
No, 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 could you remind me of those? That's...
Okay. One, the, the position in the procurement office...
Yes.
I don't think needs to be a full-time position. I think it's necessary, but it seemed to me, in your discussion, it was, it was a very vital position for this year, and also had the opportunity to provide direction to the procurement officer to operate in a different fashion.
Correct.
And with that in mind, instead of making it a permanent position, I was thinking if you made it a part-time position or even a contract position to, to do the work that you're suggesting, you might accomplish the same thing without having a, a full-time commitment for years to come. And that's the reason for, for that recommendation. The second recommendation was in the IT department, and you had mentioned at the, at your presentation of the budget the last time, that you planned to use the IT director not only to do the work that, that she was hired to be doing, but that she has not been doing that particular work solely. She has been doing that work and the assessing department work for the past year, and you plan to have that continue for the rest of this year. I think that, that having her in the position to do the kind of work that you're talking about is not a bad idea. However, I think that the work that's required in order to be able to do the IT work for the town is much greater than just doing that part-time with another person in the department. I don't want to get on my soapbox, but I will say that we are in 2024, or very soon will be in the 2025 budget. That's a quarter of the way to the 21st century. We have been operating in a much different environment than we are operating in Stoughton across the country for years. Our information systems need to be much stronger. We're going to go into artificial intelligence. There are a number of things that we need to do to be able to present information in a way that is understandable by people in the town. And we spend a lot of time talking about issues and a lot of time trying to get to yes. I would suggest that if we spend a little bit of money to get our systems in better shape, we can save a lot on the other end. And I would just suggest that you consider putting $100,000 or whatever it takes to hire somebody or get a consultant to help do the work that needs to be done in the IT area.
So if I may, through you, Madam Chair, oh, excuse, Mr. Gito, were you finished? I don't want to step away.
No, go right ahead.
So it's through you, Madam Chair, if I may address Mr. Gito's issues. I want to separate for a second IT from communication. I think there's so much we can do with our communication efforts. By way of example, on the accounting page, and we've spoken to Elizabeth at great length about this, we should have pages that show how we compare to other towns in very simple format for, for the average non-financial person to understand where our town is compared to other like towns. I, I view that as a communication issue. So I agree with Mr. Gito's overall point. With respect to IT and the current IT position, we are blessed in this town with a very extraordinary and talented IT director, who quite honestly, over the past 30 days, has dealt with a half a dozen crashes, not within our system, but within Munis, and navigated around all of them so that we could close our books and do this budget and get the tax bill out this week. Other towns were not able to accomplish that because they didn't have the unique skillsets that our IT director has. Having said that, she is so talented that we view her as an emergency manager for any department that's in difficulty. That's why we put her in this entire fiscal year into assessing. It was in crises. As you know, the assessing department is well-run right now, and she's taken all the assessing courses. Our objective is to hire a full-time assessor July 1st, that's in the budget. That will free the IT director from that responsibility, and then that department will fall under Elizabeth's management. My hope is that by hiring a professional website person and, and a community outreach person, that will achieve many of the objectives that Mr. Gito has, has given attention to, rightfully so. But I don't think we have an IT issue. Are we up to date on, on artificial intelligence right now? No, and no community is.
I wasn't expecting...
Right. We are operating very efficiently. Our, our department heads have been well-trained in Munis because of Trish's and Mary Jane's guidance. They've been trained in procurement because of Fran's guidance, using our software system that we pay dearly for, and pay dearly for the upgrades. But the system has failed from outside of our four walls, and it was only through the direction of our IT director did we not lose valuable time. And, but that director is highly talented and capable of doing many things, and we're going to have, I'll close with this, we're going to have challenges in the new year, where we are unable to hire the appropriate people for facility management, which is a top priority for us, for fleet management, which is a top priority for Scott, for public affairs or communications, which is a top priority for Lou. And so to have a manager that can be so cross-trained and so cross-functional is a really gift for our town manager to have in their stable. So we will make the improvements that you've sought out for a long time. We may not get there the same way as others may get there, but we will get there, and, and, and I thank you for that feedback. That keeps us focused on what it is we need to achieve, and so I appreciate that. In terms of spending, until we know, and I, I know, Lou, you hate to hear me say this, and I don't mean it to antagonize you, but until we know whether we have a balanced budget once we finish the school budget, it would be irresponsible of me to spend a dollar additionally above what we've budgeted in our 3.8% budget. When the school has finished their work, and I'm very confident they will, we'll know what we have to work with, and I think the priorities that you've cited are among my top priorities as well. We just need to have the money to do it. I, I hope that's helpful.
The other items that I talked about were the wellness program. I'm really not sure that I understand that. I was expecting that, that wellness program was going to provide opportunities for our police and fire and other people who need it. The access to programs that would help them recover from PTSD, from, from other issues, other stress issues, and, and a fitness program that, that provided opportunity for our staff to, to be as well as possible. What I think I've seen is that you've put people within the police and fire departments themselves to, I'm not sure what they're planning to do. I thought that the direct managers and those above them would know their staff and be able to help them find ways to, to get real help, not, not just people to talk with them within the departments. And so I don't know if I'm missing something in that regard or not.
Sure. I, I think it's, I'm so glad you raised it, Lou. We're very excited about this program. So this is the same field as, I think I've told you in the past, that my son leads for Boston EMS. He's a captain, he's a professional and expert. There are two sides to this equation. One of them is a proactive wellness program, and the other is an emergency response illness program. In the illness program, we belong to a Norfolk network of peer support professionals. There are three people trained as local representatives in the police department, and I believe there are three people, if not more, trained as peer support, certified peer support people and crisis intervention people within the police and fire department. One thing that's known, and it's one of the most difficult challenges for police and fire, is the rank and file do not report their challenges to their supervisors. They're a very proud organization, both of them. They're, they're macho men and women who, who do never, who seldom let their guard down and show that they're hurting, whether it be as a result of an accident, whether it be the result of an illness, whether it be a result of a family challenge. They're not going to open up to their supervisors who are in the command and control chain. So the wellness coordinator that we've brought on board is a former police officer who left the police department, understands firsthand the challenges that police and EMS personnel have. He is not a peer support professional, he's a wellness professional. So he is creating programs and presenting them at every shift change within the police and fire departments on proactive wellness programs and techniques. So it's, it's fitness, it's information, access to therapy, access to peer support, information with regard to diet, information with regard to financial management, which is what a lot of people stress over, and they bring it to the job. This is, this was born out of... This was born out of a young patrolman passing away very suddenly at approximately 40 years old last January in the Stoughton PD. Nobody had any idea that that young man was sick. There was no wellness program in place. There was and is a peer support program in place, but the young police officer wouldn't talk about his issues to his peers or to his superiors. So again, in closing, the wellness program, which is headed up by an individual who is parked in the HR department, he's not parked in either police or fire, who spends all of his time building relationships and trust with the rank and file of police and fire, and promoting programs and participation in those programs that are focused on wellness as opposed to crises. Should there be a crises, the wellness coordinator has all the direct contacts with the Norfolk County Crisis and Peer Support Team and with our local police and fire who are trained in peer support. So I think the best way to look at it is proactive versus emergency or reactive.
So perhaps you've educated me here. I thought that that person, I thought you were going to have a person in HR.
Yes, that is.
And I thought you were going to have personnel in both fire and police.
You're correct. We have the wellness coordinator parked in HR, reporting it to the HR director, and we have the peer support staff that are fighting fires or patrolling streets every night. So if there's a crises, they're going to respond. The wellness coordinator does not respond to crises.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lou.
The other point was the police department. We have, at the present time, or until very recently, 13 vacancies in that department. We, I believe, just sent or are soon to send four people to the academy and...
Two more.
Two more or three more?
Yes.
In May. So the four people are going to finish up in May, and then four are going to probably finish up in August or September. So between May 2024 and September 2024, we'll be bringing on seven new people. We, 13, or seven from 13, would leave six positions to be filled. I'm suggesting that we not fill four of them because we have to take in seven or eight people between now, by September of this next year. And we seem to have been operating pretty well for the last year. I think you've recommended or recognized that as well. I'm not suggesting that in the future, we may not need those people. I'm just suggesting that perhaps we could wait a year to do that, save somewhere on the order of $300,000 to $400,000, and deal with some of the issues that we were talking about. So that was another point that I had made.
Sure. I thank you for that input, Lou. That is one that I could not and would not support. And I want to tell you...
Oh, I can understand that.
I do want to explain why, though, because you make a good point, and I just want to tell you why I could not support it. And I hate to say this publicly, but Stoughton is in a public safety crisis right now with our understaffing. We are operating well below the minimum staffing levels for police officers, and we've got crimes, as we know from the recent...
I agree with you.
Please, let me just finish my point, Lou, if I may. People coming from out of town, as we know from Park Street the other night, that are causing real problems. Now, the cost of us being understaffed is bigger than the cost of us being staffed because we're staffing those with all overtime hours. Now, why does it take so long? We're in civil service. We're going to be bringing an article before town meeting in the spring for us to exit civil service. We've got an agreement with three of the four unions to support our exit from civil service. We have been terribly underpaying our public safety people, which made it impossible for us to recruit. And we refuse to hire people who are next on the list that did not meet the Stoughton requirements to be a police officer, leaving us with this deficit. As soon as we leave civil service, and through these budgets have created some competitiveness amongst salaries, we can recruit like we do in the private sector. We can call the town of X, their top performer, and bring him or her onboard the town of Stoughton. It can happen as quickly as if we're recruiting a department head. Right now, we can't. So we hire people that we have to spend months going through the academy now if we choose to hire them. And we have to hire them based upon their test score and very little else. Once we leave civil service, we can recruit trained police officers to come to the town of Stoughton. It may take a week, two, or three, like it would normal situations. So it's our goal, and I hope we achieve it, to get up to the full staffing level by the end of the year, which will save us a tremendous amount of money in the budget by fully staffing because we won't be paying overtime on straight time shifts to cover those shifts. So I look at it as both a safety issue, I look at it as a practical issue once we leave civil service, and I look at it as an economic savings. Everything we do is focused on the quality of work we do and the amount of money we have to pay to do it. This will improve our quality, improve our safety, and cost us less money than we're paying to fill those shifts right now in overtime. But I understand your perspective.
Mr. Gito, did you have any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Mr. McCrisky, did you want to go next, or we can...
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I've had all my questions asked during the past week speaking with the town manager, so I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Town Manager, thank you very much for the time you gave me to go with that.
I really appreciated your level of preparation, Joe, all good questions, as were Mr. Gito's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Vice Chair Cavey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have only a couple of comments. You know, as I mentioned earlier, when it comes to finances, everything that we try to achieve ultimately becomes a number somewhere on a spreadsheet. And for that reason, you can often use these documents to better understand people's priorities and how they understand their own responsibilities. And I think that, you know, this is a budget I'm, as it currently stands even, extremely proud to support. And I know all the hard work that went into it. And it shows respect for the community at large, shows respect for the people who work for this town, who tirelessly make it possible for us to operate this municipality, including labor. It's respectful to people who have difficult needs that we have to, that we take responsibility for in both things like recreation, youth counseling, but also our seniors and our visiting nurses. And we see the kind of priorities that I think represent the character that we have and the things we care about. And so I think it's just a really wonderful budget with respect to what it represents. And on top of it, it was, we were able to do it, I shouldn't say we, town staff, you guys were able to do this, and worked through a number of roadblocks, but got us there by making very thoughtful, wise choices, explaining them to us, helping us understand them, so that we could make a variety of votes that put us in a really good position. And your advocacy for these policies, I appreciate. And the willingness to communicate, help us understand, and direct us in the right decisions, but ultimately also respect the fact that these kind of fall on us in a way. So I just wanted to thank everybody who's worked on these for doing that. And I think this is a document everyone who's participated in should be extremely proud of. And so I'm looking forward to see, obviously, there'll be some changes here and there, but I don't see anything wholesale. I think it's going to be minor tweaks here and there. Tonight's discussion is about, or our task for tonight is the acceptance of the town manager's budget. There's not a vote, there's no other obligation. We have talked briefly a couple of times about the school budget, which is not currently, as of tonight, our obligation. But I do want to say that, as I mentioned, these budgets do communicate things. Upon receiving the school's budget, it was hard to sort of interpret, at least for me, what I was seeing. So I did reach out to members of the school committee. I called Dr. Baieda, but wasn't able to get him on the line. I just want to say that I spoke with numerous members. They were gracious, helpful. They understand what they're doing quite well. They have their own constraints, their own issues that they're working through, but I think also their document, we'll see some modifications most likely, but I think it also has, once I sort of better understood what was going on, expresses also a lot of respect for the same sorts of constituents, their children, the people who work for the school departments, their mission, and a whole set of additional tasks that, in the current environment, they are taking on, especially with related to additional English language learners, special education. So the tasks they have ahead of them, I know is difficult, but, you know, I did vote for every member of the school committee. And I'm personally, from having spoken with them, I'm glad that they're at the helm, and I'm glad to see Joe Baieda there as well. And as we work through whatever issues we need to, I know we're going to end up in a very healthy place with them. They've been wonderful partners so far. And so I just wanted to say out loud that I appreciate. They're taking the time to help me understand areas of their budget. But with regard to our task for tonight, our budget, I just want to reiterate, thank you very much for all of the work you've put into it and putting us in a place where we can really feel proud that we've done right by everybody, and that we have a sustainable model for doing this for years to come. This isn't a one-off year where we finally get to reap a short benefit, only to, next year, develop a new set of crises because we took our eye off the ball. The fact is that we're in a very healthy place, and that's only going to become compounded year over year. And so can't thank the finance team more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavey. Yes, Mr. Coulter?
Just to respond to Mr. Cavey's initial remarks, and I don't want to blow this up beyond what it actually is, but it's, the timing is perfect to thank each and every one of you. We are where we are because of your courage. We know that leadership right now is in short supply in this country. Courage is in short supply among leading members of both Democrat and Republican parties. Doing the right thing is the exception and not the rule. Your administration brought forth before this select board a whole host of serious problems, a whole host of serious challenges. And, you know, Deborah and I like to talk about facts, and facts are friendly. And when presented the data, I didn't witness any of you putting forth your political futures ahead of the importance of making the right decision for this community. We are where we are today because of your courage and because of your support, of the recommendations that we give to you. So you're all very, very kind in terms of letting our team know that we're doing the job, and we're grateful for that. But I don't think we often enough tell you just how grateful we are that during very difficult moments, I remember nights in the past year, there were 75 people in this room, and you made difficult decisions, that I know we're not popular, but it's all about the future of our town. It's all about the financial stability of our town. It's about providing quality services to our citizens and putting ourselves in a financial position where we can continue to make investments into the future. Because of your, and I am going to say, courageous votes, which shine more than ever before because so few people in our country make those courageous votes, we are where we are. Stoughton, as I said in my closing statement, Stoughton is strong and getting stronger. And it's the collaboration that is evolving right now, starting with last week's joint meeting with the school committee, which is followed up between our vice chairman and members of that school committee, that is going to allow us to really grow and prosper as a progressive, strong community on the South Shore. So I would like to return my remarks to you. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your courage. Thank you for your time. We forget selectmen are unpaid volunteers, and I talk to each and every one of you every day. You put in countless hours, and the town should, and I know they are, very grateful to each and every one of you. So I just wanted to say that before we look past that. And I hope you can deal with the platitudes the way you make me deal with the platitudes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Mr. Carrera, did you have any comments or questions?
No, not right now. I'll go through it, see if there's been any drastic changes, but Tom has said that nothing's going to stand out, and then when we have to vote, we'll vote.
All right. Thank you very much. And for me, I restate what I said earlier about being financial stewards. We have a fiscal responsibility to look at the details of our budget, and we have until, is it January 16th, to finalize it, once you, once you transition that from your hands to ours permanently. We also talk about the school committee's budget, and I know they're still working on that budget. And it's important that everyone remember that we should have a balanced budget and be fiscally responsible. And it goes without saying, because I've said it time and time again, I care about the students, the children of the town of Stoughton. My three kids went through the Stoughton Public School System. I come from a family of educators. I care about the teachers. I care about those that are in the room teaching our students. I want fairness and equity for them also, but that is the school committee's charge with some input from us as town meeting members and stewards of all that we do. But I want to move on to one as a behavior kind of question, and it's really focused on our public safety, police and fire. In our budget, I have to ask this, and it's straightforward, straightforward question. Do we have enough coverage that our law enforcement officers, our firemen, they can take vacation and sick time that's allocated to them without jeopardizing our level of service?
Madam Chair, great question. Our fire department is fully staffed, and their scheduling is done in an orderly and cost-effective way. Our police department, our union contracts have been uncompetitive for quite a while, therefore being one of the primary reasons we're way underfunded. I think Lou said 14. I think he's right. 14 underfunded. We're covering all the shifts with overtime hours, which, as you know, puts a magnificent strain on the people. They make a lot of money, but it affects them physically, personally. So this is somewhat of a crisis, and we're good at handling crises. And so the solution is to leave civil service, get these contracts done where we're paying a competitive wage, and we've done that, and we're in the process of closing the final contract with the superiors, that I'm waiting for my phone to ring to find out if we've ratified or not. They were in... They were in executive session as we started this meeting. We're in a dangerous position with respect to police. People are tired. People are one-out. We have to fill these spots, but we're reluctant to fill them with less-than candidates just to fill the markers. Therefore, the need to make these adjustments, leave civil service, and be able to recruit, like we recruit other staff members, is the key to getting out of that very difficult situation. But I appreciate you recognizing that the current condition is not sustainable. It's creating a real strain. We're doing all we can from a wellness standpoint and from a crisis management, peer support standpoint, to mitigate that condition, but it is a very real condition, and we're dealing with it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I would like to just say one thing, if I might, and that is that we got a new civil service list in July with a number of new people on it, and the chief was able to recruit good people to come onto the force. Seven will come on in one form or another this year. There will be four recruits either starting now or have started, and there will be two or three others that are starting in May. All of those people have been vetted by the police department, and the police department is more than willing to have those people onboard. They're not from an old list. We have a problem. We've had a problem for some time in terms of the number of people that we've had on the staff, and we're going to have to work our way through that. But I don't want any of this discussion to imply that the people that we have hired, whether or not we are in civil service, but from the civil service list, are lesser people. So, let's just be clear on that. Thank you.
We're not implying that, but can you clarify?
If I implied that, I apologize. Certainly wasn't my implication. My son is a police officer who was hired through civil service. I understand that. However, they are all rookies that need to go, who are untested, good people, untested, no experience, have to go through a four-month academy before they start their first day. Once we leave civil service, we're not going to be hiring people to go through the academy. Because we're bringing the wages up to a competitive level, we can recruit experienced people, experienced police officers, who don't have to go through a four-month training program.
Mr. Town Manager, I wasn't, there were just two ways that you could interpret some of that discussion, and I wanted to be clear.
Okay.
That the people that we were hiring were not lesser people than, because they were on the civil service list. But that was the, there was a tone there that could have gone either way, and people couldn't interpret that either way, and I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page on that in terms of our communication, and it was not, it was not anything relating to you.
Sure.
It was just relating to the language, that's all.
Well, I certainly do appreciate you clarifying that, Lou. I will say, there were many people that came that we did not hire. One thing that this town is committed to is to refuse to hire just to fill the position in the box. So, there were many applicants that came before the committee for consideration that we just didn't think was Stoughton material. Remember, you make, if one makes a bad hire, and we made all good hires, if you make a bad hire, you live with that person for 30 years. And so, I'm very proud of the class that's in training now. Donna has got great confidence in those people. We're very excited to get them onboard, and I'm very excited about calling the town of X their top-notch, highly decorated person and recruiting them to Stoughton, and they show up in two weeks. We look forward to that. They'll be great additions. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Gito. Now, Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very briefly, I guess how people think about a certain issue, what might be implied or what might not be implied, is in the eyes of the beholder, you know, because I didn't feel that there was any wording that was taken that way, that I could have thought that. If we know the history of civil service, they come in, you know, basically in a time where it was one of the tools for getting some veterans to work, you know, and there was an easier transition. And anybody who's followed our police department for any period of time knows that we've lost good people to other towns, and we should not be in that. We're the ones that are bringing them up, that we get them off the civil service list, we give them training, we invest in them, we make them better police officers, and they go somewhere else with better money. This is going to give us such a tool, you know, to be able to do what everybody else is doing, is trying to bring on the best. And in today's world, when it comes to law enforcement, we can't be too good. You know, there's so many challenges, so I applaud this process for happening. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Now, going to the real questions on the budget. Can we change, go to page 63, please? It had to do with Cedar Hill salaries. Is that correct now? One of the previous versions, I'll wait till you get there before I go on and on. Because on one of the earlier versions of the budget, I had that the $95,000 fiscal year salary and the 2.5% increase, I'm sorry, the 11.8% increase should be 2.5% increase. So, that's the reason I'm asking.
Madam Chair, his, the general manager's, and I know Mr. Carrera and I spoke about this at length, and we didn't quite agree on it, but this is not an increase going into FY '25. This was an increase he received in August of this past year. We were going to lose him if we didn't pay him at the beginning of the golf season. So, this is not a recommended increase for FY '25. He's paid it at that current rate right now. Am I correct, Mary Jane?
Slightly lower, so that shows a 2.5%.
So, that is just a 2.5% increase. He's been paid at that rate for most of fiscal '24.
So, should it say 2.5% if that's all what he's going to get in fiscal year '25?
That's a really good point. We could clarify it that way.
The note, note number one, and then it goes on to the next page.
The footnote.
Footnote.
On the second page, on page 64. It's a good catch. So, he is paid that currently. He will receive only a 2.5% COLA in fiscal '25. Correct. Correct.
Thank you very much. And then on page, if you could explain the health insurance, I think this is page 51, part of, let me see what the page is before. 50, yeah, it is 51. It's kind of, half of it is removed, but you were going to make some changes. Can you just walk us through, are the percentages correct?
0%.
Manager request, it has a 0% increase on group health insurance?
That's correct. So, as you recall, Madam Chair, when we made the major structural change to the health and care program, we promised the unions we would revisit this on July 1st. We would look at what the trust fund balance was, which is a product of premiums, less the expenses, because it was self-insured, of claims. The trust fund is tracking at a very, very healthy rate in terms of its balance. The premium increase, which was a best calculated guess based upon actuaries at the time, seems to be spot-on. If we were to have to make a rate decision today, we would not have a rate increase. But we promised we'd make it in July, where we have more data. In addition to that, the reason it's a 0% increase is we have 60 left, less participants because we offered the two-year opt-out program. That was a strategic bet at the time that would have the desired impact. In the last 12 months prior to opting out, those 60 members had claims of $925,000. So, you know, you'd rather be lucky than good any day of the week, and we seem to have hit that spot-on, and we believe we can go into the next, this is part of the fixed cost structure, I mean, the joint cost structure. Joint cost is down 0.4%, 0.4% because of the fewer members, the fewer claims, more people taking the opt-out program. It's what I spoke to earlier about your policy decision. It's working. So, yes, it's not a misprint. We're forecasting a 0% increase in our healthcare costs.
Thank you very much. Those are all the questions and comments that I had. Thank you. All right.
Are there any questions on the organizational chart that is submitted, of revised organizational chart? Are there any board members' questions or comments? I made mine because I was looking for that accountant's position.
Madam Chair, as you know, it was the recommendation of several board members, and I haven't discussed this with Elizabeth yet, but that the auditor report to the town manager, and we've accepted that recommendation in this organization's structure.
Great.
And also the changes we made with respect to licensing going to development, that's also updated in this organization's structure.
Vice Chair Cavey.
Madam Chair, through you to the town manager, I'm sure you probably have already incorporated this, but I didn't, I'm still haven't looked through it. You recently mentioned that there's a change to move a member who's currently in the clerk's office to the engineering department, and has that already been incorporated into this?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. That was it.
Okay. I'm just looking around again to see if there are any, Mr. Gito.
Yeah, I didn't see this until this evening, so I haven't studied it.
Yeah, I'm excited about that, too. All right. All right. So, then with that, that task is done. We can move to the next. I ask for a motion to enter into executive session to consider a strategy with respect to collective bargaining for fire, patrol, and superior officers. I find that discussing these matters in open session would be detrimental to the town's negotiating position. Therefore, we will be dismissed in executive session. May I have a motion?
Second.
Michael's office, I just want to clarify that. I made, I moved.
Sorry. Second.
I'll take a roll call vote.
Why are we going into executive session without Brian Winner?
You got me, Scott.
I didn't see you hiding there.
I'm Bruce tonight, for some reason. I don't know why.
Hey, Bruce.
All right. On roll call vote, Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Board will not be returning to open session, but will be adjourned from executive session. Open meeting adjourned at, what time? 8:31 PM.
Madam Chair, just before we leave.
Oh, before we adjourn?
Just before we adjourn. Mr. Carrera has reminded me to wish everybody a very happy New Year.
Oh.
Sorry, this is the last time we meet in 2023, so see you all on the other side. Five minutes ago.
We have, oh.
And we didn't play.
Well, have a happy New Year, everyone, and see you in the new year. Bye-bye.